February fourteenth, Town Council and Planning Commission Work Session to Order at 4:33. Mayor Mark Sukup, Mayor Pro Tem Brett Hanson,
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake,
Here.
Councilmember Robert Ochsmaaker,
Present.
Councilmember Luke Wagner,
Here.
Chairperson Phil Goldstein, Vice Chair Marty Jost, Commissioner Lisa Bard, Commissioner Tom Wood, Commissioner Jeremy Holt, Alternative Wendy Newlin, Alternate Mike Lewis. All right.
Thank you. I'm Carolyn Steffel, Town Attorney from Deaton Davis, and I'm pleased to have this work session to have an opportunity to talk to the Planning Commission and the Council. We've recently had a number of legal questions come up, so I was asked to put together this work session for you. And there's going to be an opportunity to answer question, to ask questions at the end, and I encourage you guys to do that. If you want to, if you want to interrupt me as we go along, feel free. Otherwise, there will be that opportunity for questions. So before we go, can you guys all see okay being, being in this location? Okay. We can rearrange anything as you want. Okay. Oh, you're so fancy, Matt. Thank you. Kevin, Kevin. All right. He has to hand me the remote. Okay, great. And this is an open public meeting, so I'm going to start with that. As we may have members of the public here, you're welcome, and thank you for coming. There are also staff members here, and this is all a public meeting, so we're going to talk a lot about what is a public meeting and what is not. The main purpose of this work session, though, is really to talk about ex parte communications. And the reason why I've been asked to bring this presentation up is because both staff and public officials, both from the Planning Commission and the Town Council, have been asking me questions about when they can talk with members of the public, when they can talk with staff, what is okay, what is off limits. And so we just wanted to go over the ground rules from a legal perspective. And there's going to be a lot of nuances. So every situation is different, but we're going to do our best to come up with some blanket kind of good best practices for you to follow. Let's see. Okay, go ahead. Me. Okay, so to start off, council members and commissioners, to some extent, wear many different hats. So depending on the action that you're making a decision on, it may be a legislative act, a quasi judicial act, or an administrative act. And the type of action that you're taking will make a difference in terms of if somebody disagrees, how they appeal, what legal rights they have to appeal, what factors you can consider in making your decision, and who you can talk to. So that's where it ties into the ex parte communications piece. Okay, this isn't statutory. We can't look up a statute and say, okay, is zoning legislative or is it quasi judicial? What about approval of a site plan? There is no statute that sets forth whether something is quasi judicial or legislative. So instead, what you do is this is all set by case law. So courts decide on a case by case basis, based on the facts and some criteria we're going to go through. First of all, you can act legislatively. The Town Council is going to act legislatively much more than the Planning Commission is. But there are times when the Planning Commission would also act in a legislative matter. So this, think of it as like the state legislature. This is when you're making a policy. You're adopting ordinances, you're mending the town code, you're adopting a comprehensive plan. You're setting forth the policy of the town. And so some of the factors that courts have laid out is your action is reflective of a public policy relating to matters of a permanent or general character, of general application, not normally directed or restricted to one individual or group of individuals. It's usually prospective in nature, so forward thinking and setting the rules for going forward. It requires balancing questions of judgment and discretion and concerns in area usually governed by legislation. Now, those are vague standards, and that's why I say on a case by case basis, courts look at, is this a legislative type of issue? But generally, it's when you're setting the goals and the policy and the rules that will apply going forward for the town. When you're acting in a legislative capacity, there are few restrictions on the discussions you can have with members of the public. So ex parte communication, which we'll be talking about, is limited to quasi judicial actions. Now, it's not completely unlimited. There are things you, you know, but it's, it's pretty wide open in terms of the discussions you can have and the factors you can consider in making those legislative decisions. Generally, you can bring in all of your information about the town. Any conversations that you've had can relate to that conversation. Whether you hold a public hearing or not doesn't determine whether something is quasi judicial or legislative. You can have legislative hearings, and you guys do all the time. For example, when you are having a second reading of an ordinance, you have a public hearing. That's a time for the public to provide input to you even on a legislative matter on the record before you. But you're also bringing all of the other information you have to the table to make that decision. For the Planning Commission, when you act in a legislative capacity, this would be more if you're making recommendations on changes to the comprehensive plan. Or if you've seen a problem come up again and again, and you say, look, we're going to recommend to Town Council that they do something about the sign code because it's a problem, we always have to grant variances to it. So when you're, you know, making recommendations on broader policy issues, those are the times when you would be acting in a legislative capacity. Okay, so the meat of what we're talking about here really is quasi judicial decisions. So there are other times when the Town Council is going to act almost in a judge-like capacity. And in those cases, you're going to be making a decision generally that involves the rights of a specific person there or, or property. Usually, there's a requirement for notice and a public hearing. And there's a requirement that you make a determination on the facts presented to you based on specific criteria that are set forth in advance. It also is, involves decision making on the rights, duties, or obligations of individuals or particular property. When you are acting in a judge-like quasi judicial capacity, you are required to make your determinations on the record that's presented before you. And this applies to Planning Commission. So most of the actions that Planning Commissions take are actually quasi judicial. If you are approving a subdivision plat, if you are approving, what else would be a good example? Site plan. Yeah. So most of the actions before the Planning Commission are actually quasi judicial. So when it comes before you, staff will say, these are the criteria you consider when deciding whether to approve or deny this application. And then they'll present to you the facts, the application, and we'll make a recommendation as to whether those factors apply. Okay, here's my examples. All right. So as I said, courts decide on a case by case basis if something is legislative or quasi judicial. And the concern about and the restriction on ex parte communications, which means communications outside of the public hearing with the judge or with you acting in a judge-like capacity, those restrictions only apply to a quasi judicial function. So that's why we're starting out, trying to help you figure out, is the action before you legislative or quasi judicial, so you know whether these restrictions apply. For example, legislative would include adopting ordinances, mending the town code, adopting, you know, also general policies, whether it's an economic incentive policy, if you're mending your personnel handbook, any of those general policy issues. Adoption of the comprehensive plan or, or a jet, or a big amendment of the comprehensive plan. If you have a little amendment that only affects one property, that might be quasi judicial. Annexation is considered a legislative function, and even though it affects a specific property, the courts have said this relates so strongly to the purpose and the goal of the town and what you see as your future as a town, that it, that the courts have decided this one is legislative, even if it affects a particular property. Comprehensive zoning, so a big rezoning of large areas of the town, or even saying rates and charges, courts have found that those are also a legislative function. Quasi judicial functions include specific land use applications, sketch plans, subdivision plat, PUD plan, special exceptions that are requested, variances or conditional use permits, subdivision approvals, or special use permits can all be quasi judicial. As you can see, each of these are factors, each of those quasi judicial situations are factors where a specific person is going to make an application to you for application of the pre-existing rules. Now, rezoning can fit within both categories. It can be legislative and it can be quasi judicial. So this one's a little bit tougher. If you're doing a piecemeal rezoning, where you're rezoning a particular property or a couple of properties, then it could be considered quasi judicial because you're looking at that particular property, weighing factors of whether to rezon that property. In other cases, courts have said, okay, you're rezoning thirty different pieces of property. We decide that this is a big enough legislative thing that this is going to be a legislative decision. Also, even with a particular property, it's legislative in terms of someone could bring an initiative or a referendum petition regarding rezoning of a particular property. So courts have said it's legislative for the purposes of initiative and referendum, but it's quasi judicial in terms of the rights of the applicant and the process for them to appeal. Okay, so I wanted to walk through a little bit of what a quasi judicial hearing looks like. So when you are sitting in your quasi judicial capacity, so reviewing an individual application, whether it's the Town Council or the Planning Commission, you are required to make a determination based on the evidence that's presented before you and the testimony that you receive in that public hearing. So, and those are the only factors that should be considered in making that, that may be concerned in making that determination. The applicant has a right of due process, and that's a constitutionally guaranteed right. So that means they have a right to notice in advance, they have a right to present evidence to you, and they have a right to hear the evidence and make sure that that evidence, that all the evidence is presented on the record, and your decision is made based on what's on the record. So that's one of the reasons you may see if public comments are submitted in advance, Melissa's town clerk may come to you and say, I'm submitting these, these comments on the record. These have been submitted in advance. They'll be put in your packet. They'll be presented to you at that public hearing. Because we want to make sure that any comments that are submitted are received as part of that public hearing. Also, there'll always be an opportunity for the public to make comment on that public hearing. If there's an appeal of a quasi judicial decision, then it's called a Rule 106 appeal. And that's the rule. So we'll proceed under which you appeal. The appeal has to be made within twenty eight days of the decision, actually filed at the court within those twenty eight days. And what a court does is they make a determination based on the record before the hearing. So the first thing we do is the court will come to you and say, certify the record. And you guys will come to me, and you'll say, what's our record? And we'll look at your meeting packet, the transcripts of the public comments, the transcripts of the hearing, and all the information that was presented before you. And that is what the reviewing court is looking at when they're reviewing a quasi judicial decision. They're going to look at whether your decision was arbitrary and capricious, so had no support in the record for the decision that you made, or was it abuse of discretion, or was outside your jurisdiction. And those are the only factors they're going to look at in appealing the, in reviewing that decision. If, you know, unless there's a civil rights complaint or something else that were, it's kind of outside of this conversation. But generally, that, those are the factors they're going to look at in reviewing your decision. So that's why the record is so important, because the court's going to say, is there enough support in the record for your decision that we can decide, determine how the council made that determination or the Planning Commission? And so the biggest thing is to make sure it's not arbitrary and capricious, is that you're treating everyone the same. You're applying the factors that are set forth in your town code, and you're reviewing it based on the record. So this is the reason why ex parte communications are prohibited, because it's sort of like if you were in a court of law. If you took the judge aside and he said, hey, Judge, I want to talk to you about this. This is why my case is the right case. You know, this is why it should be decided. That wouldn't be permitted. And you're, when you're sitting in quasi judicial fashion, it's really the same kind of consideration. So if you've been talking to the developer, or you've been talking to people opposing the developer about an application before comes before you, that could be considered an ex parte communication. And it can be a basis for overturning your decision. So if you do have an ex parte communication, well, I think we'll get to that in another slide. But the reason why ex parte communications are prohibited is for that reason. All right, what is an ex parte communication? In a quasi judicial proceeding, if you receive information from a member, if, well, member of Town Council, Planning Commission receives information outside of the public hearing, in a communication, that can be considered an ex parte communication. So it might be an email that you receive. It might be a phone call. It might be a conversation with a neighbor in the grocery store. So it can be oral, written, electronic communication with a public official about a quasi judicial matter on which they'll be making a decision outside of the public record. And first of all, it can create an appearance of impropriety. So even if this communication did not impact your view, if you've had that communication, other members of the public might accuse you of, okay, this was a backdoor deal. There was a conversation. I know you talked to that developer. So even if it's not influencing your decision, one reason to do it is just to avoid the appearance of impropriety. But also, it can actually create a bias and can be a basis for the person that later brings that 106 appeal to challenge your decision. So in a mo, in an extreme situation, you may actually recuse yourself from a conversation if you have had a sufficient ex parte communication. But we're going to also get to how to deal with those so that you don't get to a situation where you have to recuse yourself. Okay. I've kind of covered this. So the main reason is to ensure that there's an impartial decision making. And so one way to do that is we disclose any evidence. So if you have received an email, oh, we're going to get to that. And, okay. Well, before we get to what happens if you're approached by the public, here's things that you should generally avoid as best practices. So talking with citizens, communicating by email, text, or letter with citizens on a quasi judicial matter that's going to come before you as the governing body. If you're not, well, okay. To know whether it's going to come before you as a governing body, we look at whether an application has been filed. So the rules say that when the application has been filed with Planning and Zoning Commission, let's say for a PUD approval, when that application has been filed with the, with the Planning and Zoning Department, that is when you are now on notice that this will eventually come before the Planning Commission, will eventually come before the City Council, Town Council. So that is when the restriction comes into play. You're not always going to know what applications are pending in your planning and zoning department. In fact, most of the time you won't. So the best practice is if you're not sure, to avoid that conversation and then to ask your staff. And if it's, for instance, if it's something that's a proposed future developer, or someone says, hey, we may someday want to build in your town, there's no application filed. Having that conversation is not an ex parte communication because there is no pending application yet. So it's at the time when there's a pending application that's going to be quasi judicial that this restriction applies. So generally, I do recommend that the, that you not go to the developer neighborhood meetings because you're going to hear a lot of information that may not be presented on the public record. Okay? And I know that I had a question about this, and if you were to go to a neighborhood meeting or Town Council, if you were to go to a Planning Commission meeting, then I would recommend that you disclose that when this eventually comes before the Town Council for a decision. That council member would disclose, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. However, I'm going to make a decision based on the record before me today. So even though that planning, you know, if the Town Council attended a Planning Commission meeting, even though it's a public meeting, you might hear information there that is not later presented here at Town Council. And you need and are required to make a decision based on the record. So the risk of attending, whether it's a neighborhood meeting or a planning meeting, is that you may hear information that would influence your decision that is not later presented before you. So if you do, so best practice, I think, is to avoid going to those other meetings and wait until the decision is before you, hearing the record before you. If you do go to those meetings to disclose that you attended those meetings, to not make a decision based on that information, or to incorporate that record in. So if you attended a Planning Commission meeting, and you think there's something important to be on the record, talk to staff in advance, and we can see if it can also be incorporated into the record when you make your decision so that everyone on Town Council has the same information because you all need to have that same information before you. Okay, this is one I was wanting to get to. What happens when, and you will, of course, the small town people are going to come up to you, and they're going to ask you questions about developments. They're going to want to talk to you about them. What is the best practice? So first, this goes to my very early slides. Is this legislative or quasi judicial? If it's legislative, you don't have restrictions on having those conversations. If it is a quasi judicial matter, you are subject to the restriction on ex parte communications. So we recommend that you always just let the individual know very nicely, I'm sorry, but this matter is going to be pending before me as Town Council. We have to make a determination based on the information presented to us in a public forum. I cannot have this conversation. If you receive an email, forward the email to the town manager so that he's aware that you received this email. And then the email can be disclosed on the public record and added to the record and shared with all of the council members. So again, everyone has the same information. So you could reply back to that email to say, you know, I can't talk to you about this off the record. This is going to be coming for us for a public hearing. I need to make a decision on the record. And, you know, please, and then direct to staff, direct them to who they can contact with questions. And also, you can encourage them to come to the public hearing, if you know the date when that's going to be, or say that there will eventually be a public hearing. So it's really important that the public feels that they have a way to express their voice, and they always have a way to express their voice because these quasi judicial matters always require a public hearing. So there will always be an opportunity for the public to make their voice heard. They can send letters or communications through staff, or they can or they can sign up to talk at that public hearing. Or just going back to that, if you disclose an ex parte communication, then you're not going to have to recuse yourself from a decision process, just to make a process. If you stop that conversation right away and say, I'm sorry, this isn't appropriate. I can't email with you about this. I can't communicate with you on this. And disclose it, you're not going to have to recuse yourself from that decision. Okay, I think we've covered some of this. But how can the public provide their opinion if it's a legislative matter? They can talk to you. Otherwise, they need to work through staff until this item is before you as a quasi judicial matter at which they can provide comments during the public hearing. Okay, I think I've covered most of this. Yeah, um, I think the one thing I didn't cover is that there's always a public comment section. So if somebody, something is going to be pending before you and it's not here yet, they can always have their three minutes during public comment to talk about an item that isn't on the agenda. Okay, so as you know, there's right now a ballot initiative being circulated to amend the town charter. And special rules apply when an election is in place. And this would apply whether it's a citizen initiative initiated election or it's an election. You know, last year, the town council referred ballot charter amendments to the residents. So there are special rules that apply when you have an election. So I just wanted to go through this very quickly. The Fair Campaign Practices Act sets out separate requirements. And this is that the town cannot spend any money from any source or make a contribution to urge electors to vote for or against a ballot issue or to also promote a recall election or a particular can't make a campaign contribution. From and after the, let's talk about ballot issues, from and after the time that the ballot title is set. So for example, if there is an initiative petition being circulated in the town, the ballot title has not yet been set. The ballot title would be set after that was returned to the town clerk. She certified the correct number of signatures and then referred it to the town council, which then set the ballot title and referred it to an election. Okay, if you're referring a ballot charter charter amendment yourself or referring a ballot issue to the voters, it's when town council refers that ballot issue to the voters. After that bright line rule applies, there's a huge restriction on spending any town money. And it's been interpreted very, very broadly. For instance, there was a case where they looked at, okay, it was in that case a city treasurer, I believe, who, you know, printed a letter expressing his own opinion, but used the city printer and use city ink. And they said, okay, we're going to talk to her. We're going to see how much ink he is. We're going to see how much paper used. Oh, there were staff here helping you proofread it. So, you know, we're going to say that they're, you know, their time is $25 an hour. And so it got to the point where it violated this restriction. So it's very, very strict. There is a $50 exception. It applies to all the money spent by the whole town and you're going to get to that $50, you know, without blinking. So the better rule is to say can't spend any town money. You have a First Amendment right, though. Every town official has a First Amendment right that is not waived by taking a public office. So you can still express your own personal opinion on a ballot issue or an election issue as long as no town resources are spent to do so. Okay, on ballot issues. Now ballot issue, by the way, would be a legislative action. Okay, this would not be, if you're referring an amendment of the town charter, that would be a legislative matter. If you're certifying one that comes from the from an initiative petition, couldn't even be administrative if you said, I have no choice. I have to certify this or it's legislative, one or the other. But it's not quasi judicial. Okay, so the ex party rules are not going to apply. It's only these fair campaign practices rules that apply. You can still answer questions on if you ask a question on the ballot initiative, as long as you don't encourage them to vote one way or another. The town as a town can produce a factual summary of the ballot issues. And the town council could pass resolutions supporting or opposing a ballot question as they did with the charter amendment. So these are a few exceptions, but with any of these, you'd want to talk to legal counsel. Okay. So, um, just a few examples to walk through. How are we doing on time? Was that timer? What's that? Okay. Okay, good. Okay. All right. Well, that's good because there we wanted to leave a lot of time for you guys to ask questions. Because as I explained upfront, this is really factual dependent and every case is going to be different. And we're saying, okay, well, what exactly information do you receive? Okay, so let's say some examples. So if someone comes up to you in a grocery store and asks you, you know, starts talking to you about a plat, a subdivision plat that you're going to be seeing or in the development for the subdivision plat. If it has been filed with the town or you're not sure whether it's been filed with the town as an application, you're going to need to recuse yourself, say, I'm sorry, this is going to be pending before me as planning commission as town council. So I am not allowed to talk off the record about this matter, referring them to who they can talk to with this town manager, town planner to to share their opinion and encourage them to talk at the public hearing. If there is a charter amendment being circulated, that issue is not a quasi judicial issue. The restrictions do not apply to talking about that charter issue. If that particular ballot issue is also going to have a land use application, you cannot talk about the land use application. So it's, it's a, it's a, uh, it could get a little bit murky, but you can talk about the ballot initiative. You can talk about whether you think a charter amendment is appropriate. You can talk about how you feel about fences in general in the town. Not a problem. Those are policy issues. If it crosses the line to talking about, hey, I want to talk to you about this development and you know that that development is going to come up for you for approval. That's when you need to say, I'm sorry, I can't talk about that and refer them back to staff. Okay, so I wanted to just make this a little bit of an open discussion to give you guys time to ask questions because I know that you have a lot of questions. So I'm going to open it up a little bit to a little bit more of a question and answer and free flowing discussion a little bit. Yeah, Lisa.
I'll ask something. So there's obviously some issues that have been coming up with community members that probably prompted this whole meeting. As far as if we read something in like the Coloradoan or Facebook, those kinds of things, what's the best way to go about? Do we email Aaron and say, hey, I've read all these articles or I watched the news and they talked about this? Or is that kind of the best way to go about doing that?
Yeah, so best practice would be to try to avoid that, to not be seeking out that information and trying, you know, if you're seeing that there are Facebook or next door posts about a development that you know you're going to be reviewing to just avoid those. That would be best practice. And otherwise, yes, to share that, to say, okay, I read this news article. It can be entered onto the record and that way we know, you know, what information was received and and we can determine whether it does relate to that application or not. I do. Yeah, it's question time. Do it.
Carolyn, so we've received a lot of communication. So really the cutoff of when like we've received comments about development for probably about a year now. Yeah. Since I've been on the board.
Right.
So everything that we need to consider at that point is when the plan is submitted. And then we send those over to Aaron as well because I assume those public comments Aaron sees as well or the clerk sees as well. And so those need to go to them then to be considered as public record then. How do all the comments that are flowing in to us through the our email? How do we get that on the record? And do we make sure that those are all included? Is that the best way to move forward?
That's a great question. So if there are comments and communications you received before the application was filed, we do not need to worry about that. So those do not need to be before. That's exactly correct. And if you do receive direct communications from and after the time the application is is submitted, I do recommend exactly that procedure that you email them to Aaron and then he will determine what we need to do. And, you know, you might have a really big record in front of you for some of these applications.
Is is a CC on Aaron? Do we assume then at that point, is that enough? Like if he CC'd on it, do I need to actually take any further action if he's CC'd on it? You know what I'm saying? I just want to make sure I understand that fine line.
What's your preference? I think it would be preferable to re forward that to him so that he knows you received the communication. But I guess if he CC'd, what's your preference on that? Because you've seen it.
If you want to send it, it's probably better, safer that way. Twice is better than none.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then the other appropriate thing would be to reply because they're going to keep reaching out to you if they feel that that's an open avenue for communication. So a quick response and maybe we can even have a form response that any of you can say just, you know, just to have a sentence that says, this, we expect that this will be pending before us as a quasi judicial matter. We are not allowed to communicate with you on this matter. Please contact and with staff, contact informations that you could just reply to those emails with that said information.
I think we got a system set up with Susan, right? Aaron, we may not have the exact wording she's he's she said, but I know any email I get, I forward to Susan and then she sends an email back saying, thank you for your your comments and stuff.
Yeah, that's good. And then anything that comes through the website, I'm tagged in on that too. So the area where we would need your help is if somebody emails you directly, not using the website and we're not tagged in, that's where we're flying blind.
So if it's, if it goes through, my IT knowledge is going to show here or lack thereof. So if it goes through the Timneth email system, let's say, is, are you getting those?
The way you'll be able to tell is they have to use a form. And so it looks like a form. So they'll typically put in their name, their address, kind of a title to it before they get to the actual body. If you see that, then I'm probably in on it. But if somebody just sends you a regular email, even if it's your Timneth address, I'm probably not seeing that unless you see me as one of the addresses up there as well.
And then the I lost my train of thought when you were sitting there with that. Okay, so if we get a outside email that comes in, we just forward it to you. Do you want us to or to Susan or what's the best way?
Either or. And in fact, we had one this morning you received and forwarded to us. That's exactly what we would want and expect.
Yeah.
Whether it's to me or Susan, it's either way is fine.
Okay. And go ahead, Melissa.
So I have a question. So through our website, they can email all the council members at once.
Okay.
So if all the council members receive that that same email, Aaron and I also get that email.
Fantastic.
Is that considered something that needs to go into the record or?
Yes, I still would recommend that that be part of the record. So you should print a copy. And when we get to the point, that would be part of the public record. When we get to actually presenting that to the town council, however, we don't have to worry about the ex parte communication because it's gone to all of you. So there's a couple of, well, except that the, I guess the other side isn't necessarily copied on it. But that would be submitted to the record. So it wouldn't be an ex parte communication. So there's a couple of considerations here. One is that we want to make sure all of you have the same information. So that's, that part is helped if it goes to all of you. The second is we want to make sure we're creating a record. So on appeal, if that email happened to influence your decision later on, it is part of the record. And the applicant can see that email that you all receive so that they have all of the information that's been before you. And and then the other reason is to make sure that your decision is made on the record. So there's kind of the ex parte communication and then there's the separate issue. You know, when Lisa had the question about Facebook, that's not, if you just see a post, that's not an ex parte communication because they're not communicating with you. Okay? But what it is, is it's information that maybe not everybody as a member of the council has. So it's two separate considerations. One is was an ex parte communication. So communication directly to you outside of the record. And the second was, we want as complete of a record as possible so that all of the council has the same information and your decision needs to be made on the this on the record before you. So even though that's not an ex parte communication, it would still be something that should be entered onto the record if possible. So the record's as complete as we can have before you guys.
Okay.
Yeah.
Robert.
So Carolyn, a lot of proposals go through multiple stages and may be reviewed by planning commissioner council multiple times.
Right.
If we get a comment, say it's a, I hate car washes, that that comment might apply to multiple stages. What are we doing to make sure that gets in the record of of all of the proceedings or is that necessary? Do we incorporate prior hearings into future proceedings? How do we make sure that all that gets incorporated?
Well, I think the typical practice would probably be it'd be the first hearing at which the after that communication was made, it would be entered into the record. But that is a good question. That's something we should probably consider and discuss with staff. Whether those emails should come up each time the application is filed. I guess it would depend on what the comment is, whether it was specific to if it was a whole development or, you know, even if it's something, I hate car washes. That actually we brought enough that that probably wouldn't even need to be entered into the record because that's not about a specific application necessarily. If it's, I hate car washes, therefore you shouldn't allow this car wash. Okay, then it is about a specific application. So it really is a case by case determination. That's why the best practices and the recommendations is to forward it to staff. And then we can reply back. They can reply back and say, okay, we're going to enter this on the record or this is what we're going to do with this. So that you know what the process is and they're looped in and they can make that determination.
Yeah, Luke. Is it, when you talk about town resources, does that include email and servers?
It has not gone that far. The I do not think there's an administrative law decision or a court decision about that. However, it's possible. They could certainly say, wow, how much energy is, how much power is the server using and how much it costs by their, I mean, it's possible. So if there is a Fair Campaign Practices Act complaint, there is an administrative process that can be filed that's any citizen can file complaint. It's before an administrative law judge. So it's a little different process because it's typically not going to be in a court. It's typically going to be an administrative law decision. And so I would say best practices is not to send your personal views through your Timneth email account or through the server that is your own personal opinion, not your opinion acting on behalf of council. So I would recommend to send that from your own personal email address.
Thank you.
So I guess as a matter of practicality, I mean, I, I watch all the planning commission meetings. I've done it since before I was on the council and I've continued to do so. And I don't think I'm the only council that watches them. As a matter of practicality, I mean, do I need to say every single time we have something that went for planning commission, I watched planning commission meeting? Or does this need to be, we include the minutes in the packet? Like, what, what is your suggestion there?
Okay, that's really helpful information to have. I would say that if we, I think entering the minutes is a good idea that we could probably put the minutes from the planning commission into the into the record and the public hearing. I do know that some towns and cities do that. And I would say if it's probably good practice to say, you know, I watched the planning commission meeting, but I'm making my determination based on the record. If you were to have an appeal, that would help us out. Because you don't want anyone saying you're making a decision based on something that wasn't on the record.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you mentioned, you know, when we don't have something on the agenda, people can still come in and make public comment. And and so then it's officially part of the record. Site plans, specific site plans. This is a, this is an issue I know that's occasionally come up is is my understanding is that does not have a public comment period. In the past, sometimes we've allowed people to comment in the general public comment, but sometimes we have not. Do we have a guidance for today, I guess, on that subject? And how can we make sure?
Is it site plan or sketch plan? Site plan. Okay, I'm going to let, yeah, I'm going to let Matt talk about that one and what the criteria are.
So for site plans, as we've probably talked about in the past,
So for site plans, as we've probably talked about in the past, they are, they're quasi judicial, but they're also somewhat administrative because a site plan has, it's used by right. It is a property right owner prerogative. So the parcel of ground that's already divided, that went through public process. It's very similar to a house on a lot. So if you had your home on a individual home lot, it doesn't go through a public process to actually ask whether you can put that house on that lot. So any site plan that meets the land use code zoning criteria, it's, it's held in that same view as if it was a house on an individual lot.
So how do we handle it if somebody sends in an email the week before planning commission discusses a site plan, expressing their opinion the same way they would in a public comment?
I might need to research that one and get back to you on that specifically. And I apologize, but I don't know off the top of my head if that would be an administrative or quasi judicial. Typically, quasi judicial always has a hearing. And so I don't know. So for now, I would say forward the email to staff. And, but we can make it, we can look that up. And we can find out whether that's something that is a permitted discussion or not.
Just as a matter of, of public or as general policy, it seems if we're going to have site plans that don't have an official public hearing time, that maybe in our development review emails or develop, that we send out, we make it very clear, you need to send an email ahead of time or, or something of that nature. Just so people know.
Okay, so people have an ability to comment, which is a little different than the question whether the developer can contact you.
Right, this is, this is regards to the public.
Well, and it may be that after they've done all of their official approvals, then you are able to talk about that project. So I think that's something we should get you an answer on so that you know at that point if they've gone through the official review process, whether the ex parte rules still apply.
You were, could you, I can't hear you. Could you talk on this in the speaker? Thank you.
I was just asking, Matt, we've never, on the site plan, we've never received emails from the public beforehand. So just clearing that up, that it's not a sometimes yes, sometimes no. We've never gotten those in the.
Site plans, again, in our view, in the way that the code reads, it's, it's this more of an administrative process. So it, and when I say administrative, it is still going to a planning commission for a hearing. But that's just a higher level of scrutiny than staff approval. So a home individual lot, that's a staff approval administratively. But a planning commission oversight on a site plan for a commercial building, that's how those are viewed. It's, again, the, the use is the use by right. So that means that as long as they're meeting that, that use type, and as long as they're meeting those criteria, that site plan is, is an administrative process. So there isn't a public input into that, into that process. That's the way that the code currently sits. And that's the way that it's been for years and years.
Right, and we can always, we can like, we can always clarify. But if, if it is in fact an administrative, when you get to an administrative function, the ex parte communication rules do not apply. So you could talk to that, that developer and that homeowner or whoever's putting up the site plan and talk about that proposal and without having those restrictions.
Okay, anybody here? P and Z group, I know you're all here. Anybody have a question? Hey, Phil, do you mind getting up to this? That's okay.
Yeah, Brett, Carolyn, Brett's specific question was, if public comment is prohibited on a site plan, which it has been typically, when that agenda item comes up, if somebody wishes to speak during the general public comment on that, may they do so?
Thank you.
That's.
Thanks, Phil.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Yes, public comment section, they can speak on any agenda item that is not set for a public hearing. So it may be set for just regular action or it may not be on the agenda at all. That is absolutely permitted.
Could you get it, could you get up?
My leg worked out.
Okay.
You have, you had said a public hearing. So a site plan is a public hearing, but there's no public comment during that public hearing?
I think that the confusion, so the meeting is a public meeting. So that's actually the definition of our planning commission meetings are, they're all public, but the actual item is not a true public hearing. So a site plan is not a public hearing. If it were a plat, a subdivision of sorts, that would be certainly a public hearing by its definition. Carolyn.
Right, and anytime you have a plan, a public hearing, you must take public comment. So if it is listed on your agenda as a public hearing, then you're going to have the opportunity for the public to sign up. And I know the council's practice at least is also to ask, is there anyone else in attendance who wants to speak, even if they did not sign up, which I think is a great practice? And so you do open up the floor for those public comments. You could still put a time limit on how long they can speak during that public hearing, but that, they do have a separate floor for having that conversation. So if you, if it's not set for a public hearing and it's just a public agenda item on a public meeting, then they can speak during the public comment section.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to, and I'm going to get, let me make sure I get all P and Z. And then I'm absolutely going to get anybody that has a question on there. So thanks for asking. I'm sorry if I didn't imply that. Phil, all your gang get their questions answered? Okay, why don't you go ahead and step up there? That way we can hear you, I'm sorry.
Sure, my name's Bill Jenkins. So as a member of the public, oftentimes, and I know all the public hearings have a three minute limit per person, which I understand. Life could go on for days on some issues if there wasn't a time limit. But oftentimes, particularly with more complicated or issues or issues that, where the public is really engaged, three minutes is not enough to really cover the data that members of the public would want either the planning commission or the town council to consider in their deliberations to make a decision. So in that, in that situation, would it be best to provide those as, as text documents, either in paper form or in electronic form in advance of the meeting to make sure that all of the information was covered?
Or you know, you, what would be very handy?
I'm just trying to figure out.
You bet, absolutely. It's a great question. And I'm, I'm thinking through this just like you are. And as you know, every municipality has a three minute warning bell.
No, I get it.
So, but what I would think is by, if you could have something typed up beforehand and distribute it to the council, I would think, and then make your presentation.
But yeah, the only problem I see with that issue is that typically, public comments for things that have a resolution tied to them, the quasi judicial situations are typically done on the second reading. And typically, as I understand it, you guys usually vote. And so if you have, you know, 20 pages of information that you want considered, it ain't going to happen in that, in that second reading because you guys don't have the time to do it. So you really need to present it ahead of time so that you can be unbiased and deliberative.
Yeah, I hear you. Karen, do you have a suggestion?
I mean, I'm really looking for a direction.
The town clerk has a suggestion.
So we do have a public comment email that you can email your public comments to through that. It's public comments.
And that, can I attach documents to that?
You can attach documents. You can submit those comments at any time. If you want them to be seen prior to the meeting, the council will be distributing them before the meeting. So there is that option.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, the day of, I don't, I don't prefer to get written things at the meeting.
I would never do that because I know you guys have a, I've, I've looked at your packets. I printed them all out. And it's enormous. And there's no way that I, that I could read them and then come
Yep, and, and I.
To a meeting on the same day generally.
And I.
And I'm a fast reader.
I personally would prefer electronic, only because if there are resources that you're able to link to or things like that, if I get an email, I can easily just click on them.
You won't get the email. I understand the ex parte communication. I promise I won't ever send you an email. I'll send it either to the town manager or I'll do it actually through what's.
Through the website, yeah. Through the website gets, gives us the email, so.
And if, I'll just give a hint real quick. If you give it, get it to us by Thursday, we all have a chance to read it by Tuesday.
So to clarify, are public comments ever included in the packet if they're received before the packets?
Yes, they are.
Is sent out?
Yes.
Okay, and how, when would the members of the public need to get your comments to be included in the public packet? The council packet?
Thursday noon.
I mean, Thursday, yeah. I would probably say the Wednesday before the meeting would probably be, get them into the packet. And I would say Monday before the meeting would get them to council on Monday before the meeting. But like Lisa just said, she's, I mean, they're probably not going to read them. They may not read them before the meeting. So, yes, the earlier the better.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anybody else in the public that'd like to comment? Okay. All right. Anybody have anything else? Anybody have any comments, Carolyn?
I'd just say as a closing statement, I mean, absolutely, the town encourages public participation. We want public participation. We want public feedback. We want public comment. It's just, you know, hopefully my explanation made sense that just like you can't take the judge and, you know, pull their ear aside in a side conversation, it's the same thing that we just have to make sure that the comments are going through the proper channels so that all of the council members get the same information and everyone has the same information. And that's really in your best interest because you want the council to make a decision that if anyone ever challenges them, challenged them, would be upheld. So you want them to hear your comments and you want them to make those decisions properly.
Great, thank you. Thanks for the question.
Mark, can I just add something real quick about, about the three minutes? So, so part of the three minutes is honestly that when we have a contentious issue and there are 15, 20 people speaking, if it goes on for longer than three minutes, no offense to whoever's talking, you start to get distracted as you're sitting up here because you've listened oftentimes to the same comments for three minutes. So another option would be that if you had something last minute that came up where you have three minutes, if somebody else can talk about something different related to that is, is helpful for me. And I'm only speaking for me as far as the three minutes. I know once it, it goes too much beyond that, I, I start to, to kind of lose track of, of what's being said.
Mark, I, yes, sir. Just have one quick comment, which is, it's a little frustrating to hear that we haven't done a good job about letting people know how to communicate with us. I know that the city of Fort Collins has like a 90 second video on basically, what is public comment? How do you participate? It gives all the ways to do that. It gives the rules of public comment. And I actually sent that link out earlier to some folks, including Kim. But I'm wondering if maybe we could put something similar to that out on, on our website.
Well, Kim, could you just get ahold of the city of Fort Collins and ask them if we can steal their, what, their video? And put it on, I mean, or borrow if you want to really, but I'd rather steal. Okay. Anything else? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will re-adjourn, I mean, we will re-meet at six.